Yeah, but we have to come out.
Next week, we will have Ms. Bradford do our invocation.
So we have a call board meeting. In fact, we're going to have to... All right. Sounds good.
No, we need to add that's what they were asking about.
We'll approve some minutes in the agenda.
Yeah.
I don't believe we'll have any committee reports. Did anybody go in May? I don't think so. And then we'll have some superintendent recognitions, and then I want to say we have one or two requests for group before the board.
Two, though.
Okay. Perfect. So we will hop into the superintendent's department reports, starting with support services report. Dr. Green.
Yes, so you'll have the communications report there for your review. You'll have our last student count from the year there as well. We ended the year with fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two students. If you count your bottom dollar, we will exceed fifteen thousand next year. We'll be inclined to make it there this year. That's all I have to report.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Artie, Ms. Houston with the business services report.
All right, we're going to go over the invoices paid between ten thousand and twenty-four thousand nine ninety-nine for the month of May. Bear County Board of Commissioners paid out capital projects, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars, and that was for our SLOSS and BUD bond election services that we held back in March. Tyler Technologies paid out the general fund for fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-one for financial software disaster recovery. Benchmark Education paid out an L-4 GA grant, eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-five. It's for decodable packages for grade one for State of Elementary School. Father Flanagan Boys Home paid out consolidated funds for eleven thousand three hundred and thirteen, and this was staff training for seventy-nine participants at Olsonbeck Elementary School. Another one for Benchmark Education paid out an L-4 GA grant, twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-seven for grade K through twelve writers workshop subscription for Auburn Elementary School. Austin Road Elementary School received a fifteen thousand dollar loan. They paid that back over three years. B&amp;H Photo Video paid out capital projects for eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-seven, and it's for our new camera system here in the boardroom. And Tyler Technologies paid out the general fund for seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and that is for financial software training, and it's basically district-wide here at PBC. Any questions on those? All right. Last week, Dr. McMichael, Joe Perno, Ben McDaniel from Bear County, and Tom Owens and myself participated in two rating calls. This, we are very proud to say that we received two new ratings, S and P standards and pores. They went from a double A minus, went to a double A minus from an A plus, and so the more As you get, the better the ratings. So we went to double A minus from an A plus, and on Moody's, we went from a double A one from a double A two. So that's better, too. So we were upgraded in both of those rating calls, and that will improve our interest rate when we go out to buy bonds next month. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Artie, Mr. Perno, system operations report.
Okay, good evening. We'll just show you some photos of our projects here and our progress. The first is Austin Road Elementary, and we received our certificate of occupancy from the fire marshal last week, so that's a big milestone that we hit there. Really, at this point, we're just waiting on some sod. Believe it or not, it just hasn't been hot enough right now for those roots to grow real deep, so we can cut it out of the ground and have it transported to the site. So we're waiting on that. We expect that in June. But, you know, if you roll through the photos there, everything's getting buttoned up. The last bit of asphalt topping there has been put on, and cleaning has been going on inside. And cafeteria there. Of course, the gym, media center, some classrooms there, corridors, office area, some office furniture being brought in as well, so doing well out there at Austin Road Elementary. And our other projects, I guess our tennis courts at Appalachia and Wynder Barrow, and again, this is a complete rebuild. So we've demolished everything that was there, from the fence to the asphalt, and that's Appalachia there. We proof rolled the surface, and everything was good at Appalachia, so they've got stone back in place, concrete curb and fence post. They'll start putting asphalt down this week at Winder. We ran into some moisture there in that subgrade, so we've got to do some things to strengthen that, and so we're going to get that work lined up. But those courts are situated between a detention pond and creek, so having water there is not exactly a shock to us, but we just need to firm that up a little bit more, and we'll be ready to go on that one. And then the last update is for Bassett Two, and we've really hit our stride there at Bassett Two, if anybody's been out there recently. Steel is just gone great. We've got the metal decking going in place, and additional slabs being poured, so doing really well out there at Bassett Two. And that's really it. If you all have any questions.
Looking good out there.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, Dr. Mooton, teaching and learning.
I'll have to. I was wondering who is software this time.
Artie. Thank you, ma'am. Anything right now, Ms. Beggs, planning and personnel?
Not at this time.
Alrighty, and Dr. Thompson, strategic projects?
Not at this time.
Alrighty. With no old business, we'll hop into new business. Mr. Sinclair, Class Link RFP.
A need was identified for a better process for automated account creation and for providing a single landing page for students to access an array of software applications with a single sign-on when they log into their Chromebook. Class Link is an award-winning platform used by numerous districts, particularly heavily used in this area, that meets these needs. It's kind of a Swiss Army knife of software. Among other benefits, Class Link provides a single, I'm sorry, a simple multi-factor authentication for students. Basically, when the students log on to their Chromebook, they'll be presented with an array of little icons. They choose the one that they've chosen before. I've seen some banks that use that kind of multi-factor, something simple for students to use that still provides extra security. The ability to customize a landing page, so students logging onto a Chromebook will see all the various applications that they specifically have access to, and they can launch them with a single click. They don't have to log in again to each individual application. Particularly interesting to me is the robust analytics it gives us that shows us which products have been used, and more importantly, how often and for how long. That will be really good for us to take a look at some of the other software that we purchased to see if it's being adequately utilized, or if perhaps you're paying for something that we don't need, or we need to encourage folks to use something that we did buy that isn't, that is being underused. The automatic account provisioning we talked about, we're currently paying another product to do the same thing at twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So if we adopt Class Link, we could drop this other product, kind of cutting about half the cost of Class Link out, covering roughly half the cost of Class Link. Class Link's account creation system is also easier to use and more robust in features than what we're currently using, and their security posture is very hierarchical, very impressed with the company. They'll provide us a server that's dedicated just to Barrow and won't be shared with other districts. They have an exemplary privacy policy. They understand per per incentive privacy clearly, and their support comes at no additional cost, whereas some other offerings, you know, there's additional costs for that, so, and their support has been excellent so far. All right, so the financial impact is fifty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars out of the next year ITS budget. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Class Link software from sole source provider, Class Link, in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Any questions? Consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Webb.
It is, it has been time for us to put out another proposal for grounds manager. Our contract of five years was up with ACS, the current vendor, and grounds manager provides services to us such as lawn mowing, island mulch maintenance, shrubbery pruning, tree trimming, turf amendments, playground inspections, playground mulch provision, and other miscellaneous items to maintain the ground at all facilities and campuses. We advertised on the Georgia procurement website and Bear County's website, had a pre-proposal meeting in which five vendors attended. Only two of those firms submitted prices. Both of the firms that submitted were strong, strong companies. One was ACS, our current vendor, and the other was Yellowstone, somebody who was new to us, but actually does a lot of, does all DeKalb County and Jackson County's work, so they're very familiar with schools. So we were very confident in the proposals that both companies submitted to us. We used a proposal method, and we gave points for different aspects of the proposal, including a firm overview, the approach to taking care of Bear County schools, their financial information, their willingness to acceptance, to accept our contract. The cost was fifteen percent, and then the experience of the company. And when we went through all that, Yellowstone was the highest, they received the highest number of points through this process. They also had the lower price, about sixty thousand dollars, which is about ten, ten percent. So we recommend, the superintendent recommends that Yellowstone Landscape be awarded the contract as our grounds manager for a one-year contract with annual renewal option beginning July first.
Artie, any questions?
You said one year?
One year with renewal options at the end of each year.
Okay. There's not that much difference in the points. There is a difference in the pricing, but it's been my experience that ACS has done a great job for us, and they've been doing this for several years now, right?
Correct. They've been doing it for five years.
Right. So I like the lower price, but we'll have to see how this works out for a year.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's why we have the one year with the option. We'll know.
Yeah, I just, I hate when something's not broken that we want to fix it over.
I agree with you.
But if we could save them, thirty dollars, you know, and the fact that they do other school systems that are local, that we can go and see.
And we did, we did call and get references and talk to their contacts that they work directly with, and both, all three counties that I talked to spoke very highly of them.
Okay, well, that's fine.
And there's a bid process. And there's a process. Yeah. Good. Consent agenda for me.
And we need to vote on this tonight, so then get...
Yes, if we could, so that would give them a little more time to get mobilized for July first.
Is everyone good with voting on this tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Alrighty.
Thank you, Jordan.
Alrighty, Dr. Mooton?
Good evening. I have the Houghton Mifflin Hardcore HMH English Language Arts Assessment. This is an assessment of student growth. It's a growth measure. It's published exclusively by this vendor. The HMH ELA Growth Measure is a computer-based reading assessment that is administered three times a year. It provides teachers with actionable data they can use to design differentiated instruction and match students with the appropriate text levels. The assessment is also used to help students set reading goals and monitor their progress. The administration of this assessment in the L-4 GA, which is the literacy for learning, living, and leading grant, is used to help students set their reading goals and monitor progress. The administration of this assessment is required by the State Department of Education. You can see the supporting documents that is attached there is the renewal document. The financial impact is twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. The L-4 GA grant funds will be used for this purchase. Therefore, the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of the HMH ELA Growth Measure for students in grades three through eleven at the L-4 GA grant-funded schools, and that is five of our schools, which includes Auburn Elementary, State of Elementary, Bear Creek Middle, Russell Middle, and Wynder Barrow High School.
Artie, any questions?
So we're actually purchasing this.
With grant funds, yes.
Any idea about how long this thing lasts?
Dr. McMichael, about how long?
This is our last year of grant funding, and so this is probably the last year we'll be purchasing that assessment. It's one of the required assessments that we give with the grant in exchange for the funds. So since this is our last year of the grant, this will probably be the last year we need to purchase it unless schools decided they saw all the value in it and wanted to continue with it.
Thank you. Next information we can gather for you on the value that the schools actually report after the grant hits its power.
Alright, consent agenda? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Ayers.
Hello, everybody. Well, the good thing about buying new buses is we get to get rid of old buses, so that's my first item. Superintendent recommends declaring a surplus of twenty-six buses listed in the surplus twenty twenty-three spreadsheet. You guys see that? If you got any questions about that, we put mileage on there, so you can, you can see kind of the, you know, status of what those would be. Summary of that, buses are removed from service due to age, mileage, and cost of repairs. Some of the buses, just to keep them on the road, it costs more than effectively they're worth at the age they're at. Do buses allow for the removal of the older buses from the fleet? Again, wonderful thing, just buses we're not going to use under any circumstance. Let's see right here. Financial impact buses will be sold to the highest bidder as sold as scrap, if there's no bidder, if nobody puts in a bid, we'll just get rid of them for that. Now, one thing to note on this, two buses will be donated to safety, to emergency services to practice drills. They cut on, you know, mess with them, flip them, do all kind of fun stuff with them, so we'll donate two buses for that. Any questions?
I was just curious, like, a couple of those buses had a hundred and forty-nine thousand miles, and some had over three, so why would, where does that come from, like that?
What it would be when you say on those particular ones, the engines are needing replacing, and that's about a twenty-five thousand dollar repair. We just won't spend that kind of money on that bus. We can't effectively sell that bus for maybe five thousand dollars. So that's one of those, when you see those lower mileages, it's just more to repair it, plus with the age, we're just, to the point, some of the, some of the parts would be special order, things like that, so.
Yeah, it just looked like some of the other ones lasted a lot longer. I was just curious.
Yeah, well, and that's just a mechanical aspect of it, so, you know, some of them, the certain engine designs don't last as long, stuff like that, but those lower mileages, those are like neat engines, things like that, so.
Okay.
Alrighty, any other questions? Consent agenda? Alright.
Next item, the new buses are thirsty, so I need to get some money for some fuel and stuff. So recommendation, superintendent recommends an amendment to the fuel budget, two hundred thousand from ester funds. Summary, the sustained high prices, everybody knows, you know, fuel's been up, stayed up the whole year, so it's kind of come back to get us. Buses need to run summer school trips and summer activities, and just market variables, you know. The other thing we do spend out of the energy money, like with fuel, there's all, all that other stuff comes out of that as well, so there's a couple of other things that kind of eat away at that, so. That's what we're looking at, the financial impact, it's just coming out of ester funds, so.
So how much money have we spent on fuel this fiscal year?
I don't have that exact amount right in front of me. I know we upped the budget this year to cover for the, you know, the prices being up from, you know, like it was last year. I had to come in front of you guys last year, and we had to patch the budget.
Yeah, I know, we've done this every year for the last couple of years, actually.
Well, I know last year we did for sure. I don't remember the year before that. I'm not sure, because the spike came up and kind of, kind of hit, it came up a couple of dollars. I remember that. I can get you those figures. I don't know right off the top of my head exactly what we spent.
Yeah, can I just get the number, including this two hundred thousand that we're going to spend?
Okay, we can get, I can get that, Dave.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Consent agenda? Thank you, sir. Ms. Houston.
Okay, we're going to run through this one. This one is all of our other funds budgets. So we, we did the general fund budget, we did a tentative general fund budget, and so I'll be going for public hearings on that over in June. So this is the, all the other funds that we have. I think y'all, y'all received a little printout of an explanation of each one of the funds trying to make it more understandable. All right. School system funding. The school system receives funding that is required to be used in specific ways. We like to think of those as buckets. Each bucket can pay for certain expenses, as you can see here. We have the general fund bucket, which is, we get QBE funding and local property taxes, and we can spend that on teacher salaries, student transportation, instructional salaries. We also get federal funds, and so the source of those are, of course, US federal grants, and so the specific grants have requirements. For example, Perkins Four funding must be used to improve, expand career education improvement, improve student academic and technical performances, so each grant has requirements of how we use those. We also get school for nutrition aids, and so that's from the USDA federal funds, and it's spent on, of course, the school cafeteria. We can spend it on equipment, supplies, labor, and funds to offset the food costs per student. And then we have received E-SLOSS funds, and that is from our local sales tax and bond funds, and we can only spend that on capital expenditures such as school buses, building renovations, new schools, facilities, and technology equipment. These are all of our other funds that we have, and we'll go through each one of these individually, but as quickly as I can. Our capital projects fund is a governmental fund used to account for financial resources to be used for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of new schools and facilities included but not limited to new school buildings, physical education, athletic facilities, and equipment, classrooms. I know it. Okay. Classrooms, lunchrooms, gymnasiums, and auditoriums, renovations and equipment for existing facilities, and acquisition and purchase of any property necessary and desirable, therefore, both real and personal property, including but not limited to technology, safety and security equipment, buses, vehicles, and transportation facilities and equipment. So our revenues come from our E-LAWs proceeds, the one penny sales tax that we have. We also get interest revenues and GSFIC state reimbursement on our renovations and new schools if they're, if we're able to get reimbursements. Expenditures are the, of course, building, renovation, salaries, just for a few individuals that work directly with our construction, buses, and technology. Transfers out to the debt service fund to pay principal and interest on bonds. So the way E-LAWs, the capital project funds work is we get a lot of proceeds and we get bond money, and then we spend that over the years, whether we have a new school or renovations, and then eventually we're out of money. Like, right now, we'll be out of money at the end of this year, but we're getting bond funds, and so we'll be able to fund future projects. So our revenues will be seventy-six million four hundred and fifty-seven thousand this year, because we will be getting fifty million in bond proceeds, and our expenditures will be fifty-four million three hundred and ninety-five thousand for net income to be used in future years of twenty-two million. Our big projects are going to be Bassett Two, the art center, Austin Road Elementary School, and this is not the total price, the total cost of them, this is just what we'll be spending next year, kind of cash basis. Austin Road Elementary School, finishing up that, renovations of existing buildings, nine point two million. C-FIT, the Bear Foundation, which is funded by the Bear Foundation. We will be spending three million, but we don't fund that. The Bear Foundation funds that. Maintenance projects of about six hundred thousand, IT projects of four million, and that's increased because we're going to one-to-one on a lot of our schools. Buses and transportation, personnel, four hundred and eighty thousand, audit and administrative fees, debt service, two hundred and forty-seven, and then transfers to our debt service fund just to pay our bonds, interest, and principal. Our next fund is our debt service fund. It's a governmental fund used to account for the payment of general long-term debt. Our current debt is ninety-two million dollars. They receive transfers in, like I just said, from the capital projects funds, which accounts for the sales tax proceeds, and the only expenditures in this fund is principal and interest on our bonds. So we'll receive ten million two hundred and thirty-four thousand, we'll pay out ten million, ten million two hundred and four. Our federal funds will be allocated in June. These are all reimbursable grants and funds, so we have to forward fund. We have to pay for them and then get reimbursed. Projected expenditures and revenues are based on fiscal year twenty twenty-three actuals, because we won't get that money. We won't know what we're allotted until probably September of next year. We normally receive about eight million dollars, but this year it will be about twelve point four, because we still have that last year of the CARES funds money that we're going to be receiving, and this does not include school food nutrition. Title one, two, and four, the purpose is to enable schools to provide opportunities for at-risk and disadvantaged children to acquire the knowledge and skills contained in the challenging state content standards and to meet the challenging state performance standards developed for all children. We receive funds in the following areas. Title one A is improving academic achievement of a disadvantage. Title one C, support migrant education. Title two, professional learning, and this money is transferred into title one, so we can use it more for improving academic achievement. And then title four A is for student support and academic enrichment, and this also transfers into title one, so we can use it in more ways to help more students. The expenditures include additional parent support, instructional coaches, technology, family engagement, instructional materials, administrative salaries, and tutoring. And we transfer all of those into consolidated funds, which actually help us to, for the principals to have more authority of how they want to spend the money and the needs on their students. So title one A, we receive about three point two million dollars, for title one C, about seventy-nine hundred, and as you can see there, we spend it on instruction, people services, instructional staff training, federal grant administration for thirty-two, three point two million. And as you can see, our revenues equal our expenditures, because that's just what it is. It's a grant, and it only covers what we, what we need. Title two is supporting effective instruction. The purpose of title two A is to increase academic achievement by... The purpose of title two A is to increase academic achievement by improving teacher and leader quality. The revenues are from federal funds, improving teacher quality, expenditures are transferred out to title one for consolidated funds. We'll receive five hundred and one thousand, or around that amount, and we'll spend it all on transfers out to the consolidated funds for our principals to use as they see fit. Title nine, part A, is education of homeless children. The Barrow County School System adheres to the requirements of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistance Improvement Act of 2001 to ensure that all children and youth receive a free and appropriate education, and are given meaningful opportunities to succeed in our schools. Revenues are federal funds from education of homeless children and youth. The expenditures are after-school tutoring programs, credit recovery, transportation, school supplies, hygiene items, and emergency clothing. We think we'll receive about sixty thousand dollars, and this is how we'll spend it, sixty thousand dollars. Next area is title three, language instruction for English learners. The purpose of title three is to provide English learners with language support supplemental to the district's Office for Civil Rights, compliance, English to speakers of other languages, program staff implemented with state and local funds. The revenue, of course, are federal funds for limited English proficiency, expenditures or salaries, teacher stipends, professional learning, subscriptions, translation, supplies, and equipment. We think we'll receive about two hundred and fourteen thousand for this grant. Our next grant is title four A, student support and academic enrichment. Title four, part A, grants are intended to improve student academic achievement by increasing the capacity of state's schools and local communities to provide all students with access to well-rounded education, improve school conditions for student learning, and improve the use of technology in order to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of all students. Specific initiatives are student mental health and fine art supports, and a portion of this is also transferred to title one for consolidated funds. We think we're going to receive about seventy-five thousand dollars for this grant. The next grant is our special education, our Individuals with Disability Act. The special education program in Barrow County is child-centered education process designated to address individual student needs. Revenues receive federal funds for four B, which is our special education and special education preschool, and also a high-cost grant for those students who need additional support. Expenditures are parent support, shared services, nursing supports, administration, equipment, and instructional supplies, a learning platform for special needs. So, we receive, we think we're going to receive about three million dollars for our normal fed IDEA program, thirteen thousand for our high-cost grant, and about a hundred and nine for our special ed preschool. Our vocational education, this is also known as our Career Technical Agricultural Education, CPAE, looks for new and innovative ways to prepare our students for college and career success. With a choice of thirty different career pathways and fifteen career clusters, students can earn credentials and college credit in almost any career area of interest. Our revenues are a federal Perkins grant, approximately a hundred and forty-three thousand, and the expenditures go for equipment, membership dues, and supplies. Our L4GA, as Ms., as Dr. McMichael said, she said that this would be our last year, it's literacy for learning, living, and leading, an approach to improving literacy by unifying community-driven action with research-proven instruction. Georgia State Plan promises to improve literacy learning by establishing partnerships that utilize evidence-based practices with proven success for improving student learning, teacher learning, classroom literacy, instruction, school climate, family literacy, and community support partnerships. Our revenues are about one point one million, and our expenditures go for books for students, professional learning for teachers, literacy intervention, and minor renovations at the media center. And this is from birth to twelve, not just kid, not just kindergarten through twelve. Our next, our next grant is the CARES Act III, which is really ESRs. It provides education funding to state education agencies and local education agencies to support schools as they are dealing with the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Twenty percent of CARES Act III will be spent on learning loss. Our revenues are federal funds, about four million dollars. The total of allotment that we received was nineteen point nine million to be spent by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, that's really September twentieth, twenty twenty-four, we just have to identify everything by then, and our total spent so far was about ten million dollars. Our expenditures are summer school, after-school, graduation specialists, three, academic interventionists, sixteen, instructional technology integration specialist, social worker, environmental coordinator, instructional coach, professional learning, technology, and art supply money. So, like I said, about four million dollars, but as things change throughout the year, we'll come back to you and ask you if a special initiative can be funded with our ESTER funds, this is pretty much the last year we can spend them in. J R R, ROTC serves as the Character and Leadership Development Program for our high school students. It's taught by retired Army instructors, and they, of course, lead the program. Revenues are funded through the Department of Defense for approximately thirty percent of salaries and benefits of instructors, and the rest is transferred from the general fund to fund this program. And the only expenditures are salaries and benefits for four ROTC instructors.
Jennifer, let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said the Department of Justice funds thirty percent?
Mm-hmm.
This is fifty.
I'll, I'll.
So, if we're, if we're going to put this out there, we might need to change that.
Sure, thank you, I'll make a note of that. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
It probably was fifty-two years ago, and then now, with all the increases in salary, it's changed.
Still one of the best ones we did.
Absolutely. Pre-K program, Georgia Pre-K program is a lottery-funded educational program for Georgia's four-year-olds to prepare children for kindergarten. Our revenues are state lottery funds and transfers from the general fund. Our expenditures are salaries and benefits for teachers and parent pros, equipment, materials, and supplies, and administrative salaries. So, we think we're going to receive about two point one million, four, four hundred thousand will be transferred in to cover this fund from the, from the general fund. Most is spent on salaries. Our last fund we'll go over is the School Food Nutrition Fund. It is, the program's mission is to promote a successful academic experience and encourage a lifetime of healthy eating. The staff at each school provides every student with a base of a nutrition education and meals that are nutritious appetizing and served by caring professionals in a friendly and cheerful environment. Our revenues are federal funds and sale of meals from students. Our expenditures are salaries and benefit, food purchases, supplies, and equipment. So, we think we'll receive about nine million dollars from all of those categories. We're going to spend about ten point eight, because we have some big pieces of equipment that we want to replace, and so we're going to use some of our fund balance from the previous year to cover that. So, this is what the other funds budget looks like. It's a total of one hundred and eleven million six hundred and fourteen thousand forty-two dollars in revenues, and ninety-one million three hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-five in expenditures. You'll vote on the tentative budget on all other funds next week on June sixth. We'll hold public hearings on the budget at six PM here at the PDC on June thirteenth. We'll also hold another one at the late, eleven AM here at the PDC on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and the vote on approval of the final budgets will be after we approve the milage rate, which is to be determined.
Jennifer, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
And you may not have the answer to this, and that's fine, but on all of these federal programs, how is the funding determined? Is it determined by the number of children that we identify as needing help, or do they, how do they do those grants?
I think it's mostly from our free and reduced lunch applications, a lot of it is due to that, so the, the federal government knows that, because those are their applications, and so whoever qualifies for that, that's how most of the need is determined.
So, for the two years we had COVID, we didn't have any requirements or any paperwork on that, so they're just ballparking this?
So, they used twenty, twenty numbers, twenty, twenty nineteen, oh, twenty nineteen numbers. This will be a year that they're going to be counting it again, so we are trying to do all sorts of press releases to try to get everybody to fill out a free and reduced form, even if you don't think you qualify, we really just want you to try to see, just go ahead and submit that form, because it helps us in so many different areas.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, any other questions? Consent agenda? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, tonight, we're going to talk about the milage rate. I'll be referring to either calendar year twenty twenty-three or fiscal year twenty twenty-four, it's the same thing, but you just have to refer to it in separate areas, so I hope I don't confuse you, but we're talking about the milage rate that will be set this month for the taxes that will be due in September of this year. So, it's actually fiscal year twenty twenty-four, calendar year twenty twenty-three. All right, let's jump into it. Property taxes account for approximately thirty to thirty-four, thirty-four percent of the district's general fund revenues for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. All real property and all personal property are taxable unless the property has been exempted by law. Real property is land and generally anything that is erected, growing, or affixed to the land. Personal property is everything that can be owned that is not real estate, like boats, airplanes, business machinery, and equipment. Vehicles, usually older, that are still on the birthday tax, we get tax, we get abhorrent taxes for those, and the contents of your household are not normally taxable unless they are used for a home-based business. The Tax Digest is the official list of each taxpayer subject to property taxes together with the assessment, which is forty percent of the property value and the amount of taxes. It's prepared by the Tax Commissioner based on information obtained by the Tax Assessor. Assess value is defined as being forty percent of the fair market value. The tax rate or milage rate for Barrow County School System is set annually by the Board of Education, and we have not set that yet for this year. A tax rate of one mil represents a tax liability of one dollar per one thousand of assessed value. The school system's milage rate is currently seventeen point eight-eight-one for last Tax assessments that were sent out this month are using last year's milage rate, it is not, you have not approved any, or you have not set the milage rate yet, so all of those assessments are based on a milage rate from last year, which may or may not come true. Do not, they also do not take in consideration the governor's eighteen thousand property tax relief grant that he's giving everybody this year, and they can still be appealed by the taxpayer if they do not agree with the value. If the taxpayers appeal and lose, their value will be frozen for two years moving forward, protecting them from any future increases. All right, I'm going to show you a couple examples, so don't, this is just the median school tax based on the US Census from twenty twenty-one, and we understand that you can't find a home here for a hundred and eighty-three thousand, but this is just a good example that I use every year. The median home value in Winder is a hundred and eighty-three thousand per the US Census. Forty percent taxable value is seventy-three thousand two hundred and eighty, less the homestead exemption of two thousand, is seventy-one thousand two hundred and eighty value, and on the milage rate from last year, the taxes were one thousand two hundred and seventy-four in school tax. That was me. Barrow tax, so then I go to Zillow to see, like, what's out there, because, you know, I really can't tell you what the average home value is. I don't have that information. So, on Zillow, the median home value in Winder is three hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-six. The forty percent value is a hundred and twenty-five, less the home and sted exemption, so last year, we paid two thousand two hundred and eight dollars and ninety-two cents on school tax for a three hundred and thirteen thousand dollar valued home. So, this is just a graph of what it looks like for Barrow, Clark, Walton Hall, Jackson, Gwinnett, and Oconee. So, these are their median values based on US Census and based on Zillow values. So, you can see that we're, Clark is a little bit below us per Zillow, but per the US Census, they're ahead of us. So, we always like to ask, we get asked, what's our break-even point? So, what would a house break even to pay for one student's education? And that works out to be about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home, using the taxes that that person would pay, plus using the money that we also get from commercial property and from industrial property, that home kind of breaks even on one child living in that home for, to cover the student's education. We also like to look at how many years it pays for a student, because some people say, I don't have any students in the system, so why am I paying taxes? Well, for one child with an average value of two hundred thousand, that's for, you know, twenty-four years, the average is two hundred thousand, not just today, you would have had to maintain that average. It would take thirty-five point eight-two years to cover one child, and to cover two children's education, seventy-one point six-three. This is our Tax Digest by the fiscal year for the past, since two thousand and six. As our Tax Digest increased, so do our number of students, and so do our students with special needs and gifted and ESOL, so thankfully, our taxes have increased to cover those new students that we get and to cover the needs that we need here at Barrow County Schools. So, the digest for fiscal year twenty twenty-four is forty-one point eight billion, however, taxpayers still have till the end of June to appeal, so that number may go down a little bit. This is the ups and downs of property value since two thousand and eight. So, you can see, we haven't had these kind of increases in, forever, so the past two years have really hit our taxpayers hard with a twenty-four point nine-four percent increase in twenty-three and a twenty-six point three-five increase this year. This is the P two thirty-two, PT thirty-two point one, this is what gives us the information for our Tax Digest, and then this helps us determine what our milage rate needs to be. You'll see right here, down about three-quarters of the way, the rollback rate, fourteen point eight-five-five, we'll talk about that in just a second. So, what happened to the twenty twenty-three digest? The net digest increased by twenty-six point three-five percent, or eight hundred million dollars. The Tax Assessor's reassessed property that was already on the digest for a net increase of seven hundred and five million dollars. New real property or construction increased by a hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Personal property, mostly business, furniture, machinery, and inventory increased by sixty million, and automobiles still on the birthday tax, birthday tax decreased by six point three million. We still have about twenty-eight point nine million dollars worth of those automobiles, but they'll be coming off throughout the next years. We now get the T A B T tax for those. And exemptions increased by fifty-two point three million. I looked at agriculture, commercial, industrial, and residential, and who got what the increases were per each one of those sections. So, you can see, the blue is twenty twenty-two, and the oranges is twenty twenty-three, so you can see our agriculture got hit thirty percent last year, but only twenty this year, not only twenty, but twenty this year. Our commercial got hit by thirty-five percent in twenty twenty-two, but it actually decreased because of appeals for twenty twenty-three. Industrial went up thirty-five point four percent in twenty twenty-two, fifteen point six in twenty twenty-three, and our residential went up twenty-one percent in twenty twenty-two, and then the thirty-four point two percent in twenty twenty-three.
So, we're saying that in the last two years, residential property has increased by a total of fifty-six percent plus?
It's really more than that, because it's thirty-four percent of an already increased twenty-one percent.
Right. But just by looking at the numbers, you're, you're that much.
Could have been different property, you know, one, one got twenty-one percent, then another one got thirty-four percent, one got, you know, ten percent one year, and the other one got, and the same property got twenty percent, you know?
Well, my, my concern is that it's my understanding that the Tax Assessor is required by state law to reassess every piece of property in Barrow County every three years. So, a third of the houses and commercial properties were done last year, a third this year, a third will be done next year. So, this is just insane, basically.
Sixty-two percent is the number.
If you look at this, this is our increases and decreases in the Tax Digest since two thousand and fourteen, and it's really nice to look at that little red box, you can see. You can see the reassessments have gone from sixty-five million, two hundred and twelve million, one point two million, one hundred and thirty-eight million, two hundred and forty-two million, ninety-four million, sixty-two, one hundred and thirty-nine million, twenty twenty-two, four hundred and eighty-nine million, and seven hundred and five million this year. That's a huge increase.
Can you go back one, I'm sorry, just hold on a second.
The sales tax ratio study, so our tax assessor is doing his job. If he does not reassess based on the sales in the area, this sales to property value will decrease. If it's above thirty-five, you're still in compliance. But below thirty-eight, you lose utility property tax revenue. So in 2022, we had to bill our utility tax revenue at thirty-six point two five percent rather than the normal forty percent. So we lost, I think it was like maybe seven hundred thousand there because of that, because the property values did not equal what the sales were, that were happening that, that year. So 2022 usually comes out in June or July, so hopefully we'll see what, how he did that year with the four hundred and eighty-nine thousand in reassessments. But, you know, he's chasing, he's chasing an economy that's going insane, so we'll see where he ends up. Exemptions, so we have owner occupied. Our principal residents will get a two thousand dollar exemption. Real estate companies that rent, rent out the homes, they don't get this exemption. So anybody who's owner occupied, you get one two thousand dollar exemption. We have two local exemptions for seniors. House Bill nine eighty-five is a local partial school tax exemption, twenty thousand dollar reduction to taxable property. You must be over sixty-two and your income from social security retirement under eighty-seven thousand. And we always need to check with the assessor, because that changes from year to year. And all other income under twenty thousand. House Bill eleven twenty-four is an extra local school tax exemption, which is at sixty thousand, reduction to taxable property, and you must be over sixty-two, and all income cannot exceed thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. Again, we'll check with the tax assessor for that number. In December 2014, the Board of Education unanimously voted to modify this exemption so that seniors did not have to submit a new application every year. So they submitted it once, and it was good for the rest of their lives. Other exemptions are available for veterans, conservation, income in the poverty level, et cetera. The property tax relief grant. The governor Kemp signed House Bill eighteen on March thirteenth, 2023, for a one-time property tax relief grant. It's gonna reduce the assessed value of your home by an additional eighteen thousand, so it's about a three hundred and twenty-one dollar and eighty-six savings if we're using a seventeen point eight eight one milage rate. So that is gonna be very helpful when your actual tax bill comes out. Age-based tax exemptions, so in order to increase the exemption, which is what we're looking at this summer, and we got a study back in February from Carl Vincent Institute, the Board of Education would need to pass their request to increase the exemption, send the request to the State House for passage, then Barrow County citizens would have to come and vote to decide if they agree with that exemption. And then if it passes, then it would go into effect for the next tax year, starting on January first of the year following its passage. So unfortunately, it would go to the State House in next January, come back to us to be voted on, and it wouldn't go into place until calendar year 2025. So there's no relief for this year or next year, but 2025, if we can make a decision this summer or before December. I've been talking to Holt Persinger on this, and so he's looking forward to us bringing him something, and he's gonna help us get it passed through the, the State House. So we talked about the milage rollback rate. A milage rollback is based on reassessments of property that was already on the digest for 2023. So seven hundred and five million dollars was added to our digest because of updated values. If we decrease our milage rate by three point oh two six mils to fourteen point eight five five, then we would receive the same amount of tax money as the previous year, year on the property that is current, that was currently on the digest last year. So fourteen point eight five five is the rollback rate. If we choose that rate, we will not technically have a tax increase, so no public hearings will be needed. However, we will lose an additional one point seven million more than we budgeted for. We just have to take that out of fund balance. This is our milage rate over the past, since two thousand. Our comparison of milage rates with school, with school districts around us and similar to us, and so when people say Gwinnett County is cheaper, their milage rate is much higher than ours. Walton is too, Jackson, Clark. And this, of course, was last, last year's milage rate, not this year's. And we really don't know what other districts are gonna do, because our tax assessor and commissioner give us the information so much sooner than other districts. They're waiting till July and August to set their milage rate, but our tax assessor and commissioner work with us so well, and we get it in late May, and so we're able to bring it to you to make a decision on, prior to our budget. This is just our, I always like to remind you of where we are for our local FTE revenue. So for four hundred, four thousand two hundred and seven per student is what we receive in local revenue or taxes in 2022. And then our expenditures per, per student, we spend, we spend eleven thousand three hundred and two per student in 2022.
And what do we estimate that figure's gonna be in 2023?
I can look into that for you.
Well, it went up by a hundred and fifty dollars per student last year, times fifteen thousand students. And I don't, based on the fact that we're opening a new school, plus, I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen, if we lower this milage rate, lower than other counties, every one of those houses and every one of those lots of can have houses, we'll have them on them. People are gonna move here, so, and they bring their kids with them. So my whole problem with this thing and trying to make a decision right now is I, I really don't have enough information. We're playing a really serious guessing game. Plus ninety-nine percent of all the economists in this country and in the world actually are predicting that we're gonna be in a major recession by the end of this year. And the last thing I wanna do is put us in a position where we can't provide these children things that they need or we're having to cut, because we can't figure out how to fund this. Our first obligation is to these children.
Yes, ma'am.
How, that being said, I am all about figuring out a way so that seniors who bought their property thirty or forty years ago and retired and have a fixed income don't have to sell their farms and their houses because of some insanity in 2022 and 2023 in terms of housing prices. So we just got a lot to work out here, and we need to get on it. But again, we don't really, we don't know, we don't have a lot of answers to a lot of questions at this point.
We're getting there. So our general fund tenanted budget for 2024, we budgeted sixty-seven million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand in local taxes, but that includes our T A B T tax and other taxes. So, and at that funding, we were going to use our fund balance for three million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So you break it down a little bit more, so we wanted property taxes, we asked for property taxes of sixty million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. Since the digest came in so large, Cabinet feels it is necessary to extend the salary scales from twenty twenty, twenty-two years to thirty years of service to retain, retain and recruit staff. This will cost about one point nine million to accomplish. So just keep that in mind, once you start looking at the milage rates, to see if that's something that you would want to do this year. So here's our decision with the different milage rates. At the rollback rate of fourteen point eight five, we will have to use fund balance of five million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, and we projected to use three million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand. If we go up just to cover budget, just to, just to cover what we asked for, the milage rate should be fifteen point two nine eight, fifteen point two nine eight, and that will give us the net loss of three million, three point eight million. A milage rate going down to the orange to extend the salary scales would be a fifteen point seven eight five, and that will cover the, the extending of the salary scales, but we'll still have a three point eight million dollar deficit, which is what we budgeted for. If you wanna cover the original loss of three point eight million, the milage rate of sixteen point two nine five would be able to cover our deficit that we budgeted. If you want to cover the extended salary scales and the loss, a milage rate of sixteen point seven eight five would cover both the deficit that we budgeted and extending the salary scales for one point nine million. And then, of course, last year's milage rate was seventeen point eight eight one.
So if we cover the original loss and set the milage rate at sixteen point two nine five, that would be a one point six oh six decrease, if I'm doing my math right, which would give some tax relief. So at a one point six mil decrease, how much would that save the average taxpayer on a three hundred thousand dollar house?
So I have the two hundred thousand dollar home over there on the right-hand side. So if we kept it at seventeen point eight eight one, it's a hundred and thirty, one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. So you could divide that by two to get it to a three hundred thousand dollar home, that would be, somebody have a calculator?
Or actually have to multiply it by one and a half.
Yeah, multiply by one and a half, divide it by two, and, or add whatever, whichever, yeah. And then you wanna back it up to the sixteen point two nine five, so that's about a two hundred and twenty on a two hundred thousand dollar home, so I would imagine.
Three-ten on a three hundred thousand.
Three-ten on a three hundred thousand, sounds right.
What's our general fund balance now?
Sixty-two million.
I like the fifteen point seven eight, because I think it's really important that we retain teachers. I mean, that is, they're a frontline, we gotta support them too, and it's a bit of a compromise between the rollback and, so I think, I think the public would be a little understanding if they know that the money is going for teachers and that we're still cutting the milage rate, and we already budgeted for that loss, so that seems kind of, to me, kind of a, a good place to be. Just personally, I've been reading through this like all weekend.
Well, when you say we're, we're budgeting for the loss, what we're basically saying is we're taking money out of savings.
Yep.
Which we have plenty of.
Yep.
Which we have maybe three months' worth of operating expenses. That's not plenty.
So I'll just move on a little bit further, and then we'll come back to this if you want to. The equalization, so when you change your milage rate, it does affect our equalization grant. So for 2024, we received twelve million dollars in our equalization grant. And equalization, of course, it closes the gap between higher and lower property wealth schools. We always get it because our property wealth is a little bit lower than other districts in Georgia. It is calculated based on the assessed values of property, FTE and mils, and we don't know what everybody else's property is gonna do, so you really can't calculate how this is gonna affect us. But it will affect us in two years, but if everybody's milage rate goes down, everybody's property taxes goes up, it may not affect us, but if we're the only one that's changing our milage rate, then it would affect us. Again, it's just something we can't anticipate. All right, so if you approve the milage rate tonight, and I'm not pressing that at all, then we would have our public hearing on June fifteenth, another one on June fifteen, June twenty-second, third public hearing, and then you would have to be called in for, for a called meeting on a Thursday on June twenty-second to approve the final milage rate. If you wanna wait till next week, our, our public hearings will be June twenty-second, again, on June twenty-second, June twenty-ninth, and then you'll have to come in on a Thursday, June twenty-ninth, to a called meeting to approve the milage rate. Any discussion or questions?
Well, I think we need to discuss, I mean, I think we need to question, how much do we wanna leave in the general fund? Because, well, it's not gonna affect this year's budget, what we do. When we come back and look at increasing that two hundred thousand up, and we look at giving the people over sixty-five, whatever it is, some kind of tax break, that means the rest of us are willing to take that on, so it's, we gotta have some.
So no additional tax break can happen in 2020?
That's right, so it won't affect this year.
It won't affect this year or next year, no.
Okay.
All right, Jennifer, I have a question for you. The projected net loss. So let's say if we covered the budget at fifteen point two nine eight, does that mean three point eight million dollars is coming out of our fund balance? So we're not really covering our budget.
Right.
Tell me how that works.
Right, so we are required to do a balanced budget, and we can use our prior year's fund balance to balance that budget. So our revenues, our projected revenues didn't cover what we want, what we need to spend on our students next year. Of three point eight million dollars is we're spending more than we're budgeting in revenues. So we felt like we had a good little padding there in our fund balance, and so we feel comfortable that we could take that out of our fund balance. And again, sometimes that net loss doesn't come to fruition because of, some of our departments can't or don't spend what they're allocated. We also have those teachers that retire at a higher cost, and we bring them in at a lower cost. So a lot of times, that net loss may not happen.
After looking at the budget, I feel like the things we're doing, I think it would be good to at least cover the budget. But at the same time, I think we have a very healthy fund balance. And so I would like to consider maybe covering the budget at the fifteen point two nine eight and still using one point nine from the fund balance to extend the salary scale. Is that, would that be an option? Because that would bring us down to around fifty-six, fifty-seven?
Fifty-eight million, or five million, eight hundred thousand that we would take out of fund balance?
So it would leave about fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-six-ish million and fifty-seven?
Million, mhm.
And what is, what's an average month cost us? Was that, was it twenty?
Sixty divided by twelve, what's that?
I know you said the recommendation was like thirty-two, like we're double right now.
Double what the recommendation is?
Fifty percent is the recommend, recommended, and it might be thirty percent.
That's like two months.
If somebody wants to divide, so I'm sorry, I should write a calculator. You wanna divide a hundred and eighty-five million divided by twelve, that's one month of expenses.
Fifteen point four.
We have about three months.
So, I know we give you a little bit of a hard time for being super conservative every now and then.
We have a hard time with that.
So, so what, I think I asked you this last time we talked about it. What are you comfortable with, you know, what are you comfortable with the fund balance being? What's your comfort level on the fund balance? I don't care what the average is, I mean, this is, this is your world. So what, what are you comfortable with the fund balance being?
I, I think I'm, I love three months, that's fabulous. I think we're a little bit more than three months. So we could stay at two and a half to two and three-quarters months.
So fifteen point.
So we just said a little fifteen million is a month, so three months is forty-five, and we would be sitting at fifty-seven if we cover the budget and pay the one point nine to extend the salary scale. So we'd still be very comfortable.
Yeah.
Right?
It's comfortable, and then you always have to remember that we don't know what's gonna happen in the future and the government cuts state funding.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I'm comfortable with, like you said, around three. But you do have to realize, if we go down that far on the milage, we'll have to potentially in a year or two. But you do have to realize that if we go down that far on the millage, we'll have to potentially in a year or two, we have to go back up. And that's never as, that's never as politically fun as, uh, taking it down for sure.
And again, that's one of the.
But that's, that's why we had it.
Yeah, and that's, that's also, we don't know what the state's going to do in terms of equalization too. We could very well be hit for another three or four million dollars.
That'd happen quite a decade.
Yeah, exactly.
Got a little surprise that'll occur.
I think no matter what, we need to look at extending our salary schedule to thirty years to stay competitive.
I support that.
I, I.
I've heard a lot, I mean, I'm surprised how much I've heard about that specific issue, so I'm, I'm in support of.
Other districts are, are starting to do it in the past couple of years. We really do need to do that to be competitive.
No doubt.
Our schools are only as good as our teachers are.
Again, am I, going back to what superintendent just said, I don't want to have to come back two years from now and say, oops, and we're going back up on, on taxes.
Every year should be individual.
That's what I was about to say, I mean, if we have to, we have to, and, and it's not fun and.
But you can also show them that we also re- reduced it to my understanding.
Yeah, you're right, last year.
So, you know, I think that's completely reasonable.
And we never know what home values are going to be.
Yeah, good tank.
You know? Which is what this is all, you know, based off of.
So I, I'm getting this, I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight. So over the week, I'll be here for you. Um, we can talk through anything. If you need me, talk with the superintendent and then we'll.
One question before you leave. All right, if we roll it back to, uh, one of these figures that I've heard tonight, uh, how is that going to impact what we can do for our seniors down the road?
It will.
I know, I know it, it won't happen for two thousand and twenty-five for them. So they will get some break from this like everybody else does.
Correct.
But, so that, what you're saying is, we do it for this year, then we don't necessarily have to worry about if the king do something for them down the road.
Correct, so.
Or should I say us?
In two thousand and twenty-five, if we increase that exemption, then more than likely we'll have to increase the taxes on everybody else. So if, if, if the exemptions, if the additional exemptions cost two million dollars, um, I think I have a, a mil this year. Hang with me for just a minute, um. I have a mil being, um, and one mil gives us four point one million dollars. So if it costs us four million dollars to give our seniors an extra tax break, then we'll have to increase everybody else's mil by one, one mil.
Jennifer, can you go back to the slide that showed the different counties' milage rates?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think except for Hall, a lot of the ones that offer a senior exemption do have higher milage rates than us already, which is probably one of the reasons why they have that higher milage rate, to counterbalance the.
Well, the other thing about this too is that these counties that, that have higher milage rates tend to have more industrial and commercial development too.
Absolutely.
And so there's, there's the other issue that we're addressing is that sixty-five percent of our taxes come from residents instead of commercial and industrial tax base.
And Hall County's also got the, um, lake property, right?
Yeah, that true, exactly.
Like a million, two million, million dollar homes.
So, there's that.
They downsize a lot of industry.
You're a great job. That's a lot.
So Mr. Chairman, we're not going to vote on this tonight?
We are not.
Uh, another thing too, Jennifer, why aren't we, I know this, well, it's just a one-year thing, okay? But why aren't we considering what the governor's doing for the exemptions? You had a slide in there that said we weren't looking at that. But I, it's my understanding he signed the legislation, right?
Yeah, we, we'll receive, we'll receive, that's where, we are budgeted to receive it, so they, they won't have to pay it. But the governor will reimburse us for that.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for her now? I know there'll be just.
One other quick thing to point out or to ask really, Jennifer. Um, I know a couple of these of our neighbors have, uh, have some bonds.
Yes.
Off the milage rate, are, are those included in your numbers?
Yes, sir.
I thought they were.
Yes, sir.
So for example, I think Walton and Jackson both still have a bond out there, over and above.
Walton and Jackson, we're in a problem. And that's the other thing to consider, you know, we, we basically are really, we, that would be Jennifer and the superintendent uh, and her staff are really good at budgeting and not overspending. There's, there's, there's no fluff in our budgets. And in fact, given the amount of new students that are, that we're going to have coming into the system and the fact that we're opening a new school, which means we have to hire more teachers, more bus drivers, more custodial staff, more, more, um, lunchroom workers and everything else, you know, we just need to be really careful about this. Because again, our primary obligation is to ensure that every one of these children get the best education we can provide them, given, given the resources that we have. And I don't want to see us cutting resources and then having to come back and either increase taxes or cut resources and say, oh, well, you know, we can't, we can't hire this extra school nurse or this extra teacher or this extra, um, instructional coach or, or whatever these kids need. It's just, we, we've done that before and it's painful.
Yeah, a great example of that is Jason Sanders coming in and asking for gas money. He didn't have any fluff in his budget at all to cover this, um, additional expenses to gas. So he has to come back and, and ask for more money.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's a total of about eight hundred thousand dollars in the last two years we raised the fuel budget.
I, um, it seems like he gets about six hundred thousand and then I have another little bucket of money for him that I, I, until we need it. So it's about seven hundred thousand, so he's probably at nine hundred thousand now, a thousand and four. All right, okay. So, uh, you guys approved me to be able to get a, um, a private audit, um, firm to come in instead of using the Georgia DOE. So we, we, um, business services sought proposals for financial audit services. The RFP was analyzed on the Georgia Department website and the Barrow County School website for seventy days. Four hundred and twenty-four vendors were notified, but only, we only had one proposal response was received. Um, the proposals were, of course, judged on suitability and price. Molly and Jenkins, um, services Walton, Oconee, Gwinnett County Schools and sixty other school districts in Georgia. So we believe that they are qualified to do the job. They gave us a five-year proposal. We had budgeted eighty thousand dollars and it all came in under eighty thousand dollars for each year, except for two thousand and twenty-seven is right at eighty thousand dollars. So the superintendent recommends approving the contract with Molly and Jenkins, Jenkins to provide financial statement preparation and audit services for Barrow County Schools for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and the option to renew for up to four more years. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three costs to be paid in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four and it's seventy-four thousand dollars.
And this was taking some of the stuff off of your department's plate as well, not just doing the same thing Georgia DOE did, but also doing more services for us.
And we paid for, what did we pay for that?
Uh, we paid about thirty thousand this year for Georgia DOE to come in and do single audits and, and do, because they, they, they charge us on the federal programs because they know that we get indirect costs of those programs. So they take a portion of that.
But, um, this will, uh, do the financial preparation also, which takes Pam McNamara. She has, um, she has audit season and then she has budget season. So audit season's about six months of the year. She'll still have to close out the books and she'll still have to get back up for each, um, each liability and asset account. Um, but it will save her a lot of time in financial preparation and will also give us a lot of, um, give us a, uh, somebody that we can always go to to ask questions for and to help us out throughout the year.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, um, policy revision, DIB financial reports. We are asking to change the threshold of our intangible assets. Intangible assets are things like subscription and leases, um, that you really, they're really not ours. We're just using them. Um, so GASP standards eighty-seven and ninety-six require that school districts capitalize, uh, leased equipment and online subscriptions. This is a brand-new, um, uh, addition to our financial statements. Um, but if we increase our threshold to one hundred thousand dollars, it will make this task a little less time-consuming. So anything under a hundred thousand dollars, we won't have to capitalize. I, I think it's stupid because it's, it's not our asset. You know, we're leasing copiers, but they're not really ours. So why are, why are they now our assets? So it's, it's a silly rule, but we do have to do what, um, the GASP statements tell us to do. So we're asking to change the threshold of intangible assets to a hundred thousand dollars and add wording to cover leased equipment or subscriptions to be in compliance with government, governmental auditing standards eighty-seven and ninety-six. There really is no cost to this.
Any questions? Consent agenda?
No.
Anything else for us?
Matt, I think I'm.
That's it?
I hope.
Good job.
Yay.
Well done. All righty, Mr. Perno, custodial contracts.
Okay, uh, the labor market continues to be volatile and challenging for us in the custodial program and in other areas as well. Uh, but because of this, uh, we're asking the superintendent to recommend the continued use of contractors ACS and FQS and FY twenty-four for cleaning labor support. We're also asking the superintendent to recommend use of a standard contract form with language that would allow for negotiation of rates and issuance of bonus payments. And that would fall in line with what we brought to you last month for Primero Staffing, that contract language. So we just want to get those synchronized. These companies provided support to us last year. Uh, they do a good job. They're paid at rates commensurate with what, uh, is paid for, uh, Primero Staffing. And we budgeted approximately four hundred thousand dollars for ACS and three hundred thousand dollars for FQS in this coming fiscal year.
Any questions? Consent agenda? All righty.
Okay. Uh, the next item is a construction manager at risk recommendation for our new performing arts center and site improvements at the Innovation Campus. In November of two thousand and twenty-one, our building committee met and discussed upcoming facility needs, including a need for a fine arts facility at the Innovation Campus. Uh, this is a facility that would, uh, support not only BASSA, but our district and the community. Cunningham Forehand Matthews and Moore was approved by the board in March of two thousand and twenty-two as architect for this project. Stated cost limitation of fifteen million dollars was identified in our request for proposal for this project. System operations met to discuss, deliberate and evaluate each proposal. Um, and this was after a pre-proposal meeting in which six firms attended. Five then submitted proposals for our consideration. And after review, after a review of those, um, our recommendation is that Charles Black Construction, we're asking the superintendent to recommend Charles Black Construction Company as construction manager at risk for the new performing arts center and site improvements.
Consent agenda? Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to remind, we, um, as you all know, Foothills has been through a little trial and tribulation, um, but come out pretty, pretty strong on the other side of it. Um, just changing the way their charter works a little bit and a few other things. So we have to just redo our environmental agreement with them. Our MOU is not a, really a whole lot of change in it. One of the main changes being that they're actually going to pay us a little bit more for facilities, for facility usage because the way it, the way it works now. So really it's just, uh, um, just getting an okay from you all to go ahead and sign off on that, um, updated MOU. So if you have any questions, glad to answer them. I will actually be directly on the board. I was on the board when we opened Foothills and then I was an advisor on the advisory board. Now I'm back on the board. Um, that was one of the other changes. The larger systems have to, have to be on the board and run the board now, so, which I'm glad to do. They do a wonderful job with kids that need them.
Any questions?
No, I'm good with that.
All right, consent agenda? Yes, sir?
Thank you. And then the next one is the, uh, the RISA building, the, um, the Rutland facility over in Clark County. Um, as you all know, we've been dealing with the fact that GNET's program run by our, our, uh, local RISA here, Northeast Georgia RISA's closing, closing, um, and being dispersed out back to the systems. Um, currently, the way it's worked out, we all, there's thirteen, I believe, um, districts in the RISA that own a portion of the Rutland building. It's over in Athens, it's housed the program. Our share of that building is nine point four five percent. Um, recently, the Board of Control, which is all the superintendents of, of the RISA, um, passed a resolution to, uh, put that building up for sale. Um, property was appraised at seven million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The buyer, um, that we have found currently owns forty point four three percent. That would be Clark County, uh, school system, which makes sense. So, uh, the buyer will be purchasing our portion of the building at appraised value. We should receive seven hundred and fifty-one thousand and, uh, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for our share.
How much did we pay for that original, that building was built?
That, I don't know, that was a long.
We paid, um, one point two million dollars in interest and principal.
One point two million?
Yes.
So we're taking a, so we're taking a five hundred thousand dollar loss on this, basically?
Well, we got used though, for all those years.
Yeah, that's true.
That's, that's valuable, you know?
Never mind. Um, so Clark County owns most of the building?
They actually do, yeah, they own, already own, they own forty percent of it. They also actually own the kitchen and all of that, all the, they provided the kitchen and the, the, um, all of the, uh, school food nutrition, um, ovens and stoves and all of that stuff too. So that's something that we have not had to make.
How long did we have that facility? How, when was that built, I've forgotten.
Oh, that's when it was built in.
A long time ago.
Twenty twenty. Did we start paying on?
Uh, it was probably at least fifteen years ago.
It's been at least fifteen, twenty, twenty years.
Not longer than that, hadn't it? I don't know, it would, it, the old building was a mess for years.
Yeah, the old building was horrific. It liked it.
So basically, we had used the building for probably fifteen years, at least.
Definitely before two thousand and eight.
Before two thousand and eight? Okay, so fifteen years and more?
We'd saved us money, we didn't have to house it here, so.
Well, yeah, but now we're going to have to, so.
Now we'll have to pick that up.
So it's five hundred thousand over fifteen years.
Kind of build it in as we go forward too, so.
Okay.
So that's, um, we just need you all to okay for the.
Well, if we don't okay it and they don't sell it, then we're just stuck with still, yeah, we're just stuck with paying maintenance.
Do we have to vote on that? Does that need to be, okay?
Yeah, they, well, we, they'd like us to, like, uh, we might, then see. I don't know how those real estate agents.
You need to vote on that tonight?
Does it matter tonight or next week?
No, next week's fine.
Okay, consent agenda, everybody?
Yeah.
Couple of months before we get clean out and all that good stuff.
Dr. Mo?
Could you, the, for an update on the exemplary committee meeting that we held most recently on May twenty-fourth? Uh, Mr. Raper, Ms. Stevens, Beth McIntyre and Dr. Louis Petrie and I met for the, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two self-assessment. Um, this is a governance team self-assessment, which is based upon the Georgia State Board of Education Standards for Effective Governance. It provides the board and the superintendent a status review on the implementation of identified best governance practices. The roles and responsibilities of the governance team are clarified and quantified during the assessment process. The self-assessment instrument is not intended to be used as an evaluation instrument, only as a self-assessment. However, it is designed to provide benchmarks for the governance team, which is the superintendent and board, uh, to consider their establishments on improving governance and best practices. Uh, the self-assessment can be used as an internal or an external instrument. And the committee had a chance to review eight domains for this assessment. committee had a chance to review eight domains for this assessment. Those domains include governance structure, strategic planning, governance and community relations, policy development, board meetings, personnel, financial governance, and ethics. Within those eight domain- domains, there were seventeen standards that we rated for the, uh, board as well. After the completion and review of this, an action plan can be developed if the board feels that there are areas that need improvement. This also impacts the system strategic- strategic planning goals, the superintendent's evaluation instrument, policy changes, and financial planning, if there is, uh, if there are areas that are outlined, uh, for need for improvement. The committee did, uh, rate ourselves satisfactory on each one of the domains and the standards, and, um, I wanted to give Ms. Stevens, who was our facilitator for the committee review, an opportunity to see if there's, um, any feedback. Ms. Stevens, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I'd just like to say that the community members that were part of this process are longtime, um, folks who've worked with our school system in a variety of ways, so they're very familiar with some of these standards or what we talked about and how we do things. And, um, they had input, but basically the input was, we can't be better than satisfactory. Okay? I almost wish in some of these areas, we had a, you know, outstandingly satisfactory, because we are very good at some of the things we do, but we're good at everything that is was on this. So, the only thing I would say is that I'm grateful that we have community members who take this seriously and- and who work with us on this every year and...
It's a blessing.
Yeah, it's a blessing.
And we're appreciative of the work that goes along with this. There are documents that we have to review. We have to look at school system processes, and we have to collect examples that support the ratings that we give for each one of the standards and domains. So, there is supporting documentation and evidence that is collected to support those ratings.
Thank you.
Alright, consent agenda?
Going back to your question, real quick, two thousand and six. I was able to pull the D, uh, when the D was signed.
Seventeen years, okay.
Alrighty, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disbanding action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the disposition of superintendent.
Yes.
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 Alrighty, guys, if you'll give us a room for a few minutes.
Ms. Stevens?[1766.48][1766.48](laughing) Ms. Kelly, all in favor? Already motion passes. And then lastly, the superintendent recommends Yellowstone Landscape as the grounds manager at risk for the Barrow County school system. This will be a one-year contract with annual renewal options. What's the pleasure of the board?
To make a move to accept superintendent's recommendation.
All right. Ms. Stevens?
Stevens.
Is Fairleigh all in favor? Ms. Kelly, all in favor? Motion passes. We will see everyone next Tuesday at our regular board meeting. Y'all have a good night.